... Here.
Here.
Okay, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there any discussion about any of the items on the consent agenda that we should look at individually? If not, we'll go.
Yeah.
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 Okay, item three, receiving phone communications. So we have Mark Lindine and representatives of the 400 block North Main. I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. I am Mark Lindine. Glad to have you as your board to administer the on the 400 block North Main.
Okay.
I guess I get the conundrum first. My name is Steve Rodd. In order of a home in North Main, I'd like to first thank the ordinance committee for hearing our concerns about two properties on the 400 block North Main. We have concerns about several violations of city ordinance thirteen dash two that were brought up at our meeting with the ordinance committee. We have talked to Jack Skolrm and met with Ron Archer concerning the process of resolving these violations since our meeting with the ordinance committee. These issues are not new. The ordinance committee members told us that these properties have been on their radar. The ordinance committee told us that the first step, certified letter, has been done previously, and they would go directly to serving those violations. Our reason for being here today is to let you know we are monitoring the process to ensure violations are resolved in a timely manner. This is not one or two homeowners on 400 North Main. We have had several blockings to discuss the problem and determine how we can facilitate a resolution. We have several owners on our block here seeking to support our concerns. We, as citizens of Mount Pleasant, have these concerns for all properties in Mount Pleasant, but these are the ones that we see every day coming and going from our homes. We hope the council has the same high level of concern that we do, for we know that attractive, well-maintained properties can make our town desirable to prospective businesses, prospective students to Iowa Western University, and people desiring a home in a town with a small-town atmosphere, but with some of the advantages of a larger community. Property values will be greater, which creates a larger tax base, which any entity whose income is based on the tax base should do everything in their power to encourage residents or enforce ordinances if it comes to that, which is the point of we are in these cases, to achieve a pleasant community. After all, isn't that our town's name, Mount Pleasant? Maureen Walsh-Lindine, my neighbor across the street, has some comments and documentation that I photographed to share with the council, and they saw me there. Thank you for your time.
To start, I would like to thank the city council for allowing us to voice our observations. My neighbor, Walsh-Lindine, I live at 408 North Main Street. I moved to Mount Pleasant approximately twenty-five years ago and chose the 408 house because it's an older gracious home on an attractive, well-maintained street. But recently, two of the houses are not being well-maintained and lowering the quality of our community. I really would prefer to not be here this evening, but I feel a need to be here because I want Mount Pleasant to be a thriving community that people want to live in, be proud of, and want to bring their businesses and business here. I began taking photographs of the properties in April 2015. Many have been taken from the street or sidewalks, a few are taken from the backyard. Most of these sites are visible to anyone. I have available to you if you would like to see them this evening. There's been an increase in trash, garbage, litter, non-riding vehicles, and weeds. Some of the weeds are five to six feet tall, well over the six-inch limit allowed in the Mount Pleasant ordinancees. We know that you are aware of similar sites in Mount Pleasant and that you have addressed and resolved these unkept properties. We would like North Main Street to be another one of these sites. We have pride in our homes and in Mount Pleasant. Main Street goes beyond the town square. We like that all our homes are different and decorated in unique, individual ways. The homes do not need to all look alike, but we do expect them to be maintained neatly and not to be the eyesores they have become. We will return to future city council meetings to see what progress is being made and what can be done to continue to make Mount Pleasant the loveliest community in Iowa. Now, would you like the pictures?
Sure.
Okay, I have four sets. And... So... The ones with the white paper clips are one property, the ones with the blue are another. Yeah. And you are welcome to keep these.
Can you guys... Are they rentals, or is the owner's...
The owner's...
Involved with them?
Yes. And... The dates that the photographs were taken are actually on the backside, so that's why it's written on the paper. The photographs. And we have other members of our street here. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Okay, half the council's down on the ordinance committee, so there's CNN for the first round. Terry, CNN. Okay, now, I talked to Jack for a little bit. You have one issue as far as building code, and what's that, Jack?
Yeah, um, the property maintenance code establishes a minimum standard that houses need to be kept to, and there is essentially only one violation of the property maintenance code, and that's on 414 North Main, and it's a hole and a soppy in the eve overhang, essentially. And, um, so I did send a letter to the property owner.
414?
Excuse me, yeah, 414. Excuse me, in my... I addressed two problems. One is that it's not completed, and so I addressed that, and I addressed the roof overhang problem, and I have talked to the people on the phone, and they're working to repair them, so...
How long, how long do they have to get that done, Jack?
The letter, the letter suggested thirty days, and if...
Do you have a date, do you have a date on that?
I sent it about a week ago, and so...
So sometime around the fifth or sixth of September?
Yes, and so if it's not addressed by then, then I'll send an actual order to abate the violation.
Okay.
And, um, but I expect it to be through us then. Um, the other issues are dealt with through the police department.
Can you speak to any of those tonight for the public?
Yeah, the committee service officer, this is under his job description anyway. He has sent a letter to the property owner, the certified letters, and we have, if you receive the green cards back, if they've been received, once a letter is received by the property owner, they have ten days to comply with what the letter requests.
Do you know what he wrote in the letter?
It's basically a copy of what had prepared for us on the codes by official to address and how much time and that sort of thing.
So, we don't have a copy of that with us, which is sad, right? Okay. Do you have a copy of the letter sent?
Yes. I have a copy of the ordinance, it's true.
What, yeah, give it to Ron.
Okay. Yeah, both the property received a letter from our department asking that they fix the nuisances and gives a description of what faults that category. Uh, I know that Officer Walker also spoke with regarding some of the issues, and our goal was to try to get people to comply with the nuisance problem prior to actually sending a letter or us to filing charges ultimately, once they have it. Ten days is up if they haven't fixed the issues that we've addressed them, and use a prepared charge and send it to the city attorney for follow-up.
Okay, but the issue is, would they haven't, they haven't signed for the letters yet, right?
We haven't yet.
Okay, so if they don't sign for them, what's the process after that?
I guess we'll just go ahead.
But can you have...
We can try personally, sir, but I guess we can take the letter, knock on the door, cut it in, deliver if we can.
Or we can still proceed just with the certified letter alone.
Okay. They don't have to sign for it before you can, before you proceed?
No, you just...
Okay. And a copy of what you sent through the post office is proof enough?
Jared has that, and he's got in touch with me too, where he's had some notices.
Okay, so I guess when is the date, when is the date that this is up?
I can't advise you that.
But it's got, if it's ten days, it can't be too long, right?
Shouldn't be.
Okay. So at the end of the ten-day period, if they haven't done anything, that's when you proceed further, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anything that brings a certain date on it?
If people haven't signed for certified letters, the post office usually sends us the letter back in about thirty days.
Oh, so we don't know for thirty days?
Yeah, so it can, it can be with the post office for thirty days, and they'll, they'll make three attempts to get the owner to sign it. And then after the third attempt, if they don't sign it, they send it back. That's how it usually takes about a while.
Okay.
Well, it's in the post office.
So do we have to wait that long, Ben?
No, excuse me. And Sheriff's Service.
Okay. So I guess, do we know what, if they don't sign, when are we gonna do so? And that's try and serve it again through the sheriff, is that what we do next?
It's just another way to serve it, too.
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out the timeline here. You know, we're...
These people want to see some results.
Yeah, they like...
I mean, they, it's common knowledge, everyone here and everyone that's out here, that those homes have been respectable for years, for months, I should say, and they, and I don't blame them, they want to see some results, they want to see some type of action, and I, I prefer...
Well, we have a card back, you know, tomorrow we should have another package served to.
Okay.
That's what you want to do, maybe that's...
Did you and I discuss this on one of the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think we need to go. If they've, if they've had plenty of time to sign the certified letter, and we don't have it back yet, I think it's time for the next step. And the next step would be, what is it, charges or what?
Nuisance filing failure to abate your nuisance after you've picked up the notice. So that's the notice, that has been used in contracting, which is civil, civil action. And you can't buy the day, and we can, I usually ask for at least a hundred dollars per day from the date that your time is up. So if they had ten days to clean something up, which was, let's say, due today, that would be a hundred dollars a day.
Okay, does that take, what, now, what are you saying, that, does that take a letter that you have to send them another notice that they may not accept or whatever?
If municipal fractions need to be filed with the court, yes, then they would get noticed. In this case, municipal fractions, I would do it through services, sheriff's office. Not even, it's a civil lawsuit, but...
And we're to that point, is that the deal? Are we close to that point?
If they're timed up.
Okay. You think the time's up, Ron, or do we not?
I don't know. I'm sure it should be getting close.
So one of the community service officers has contact with them. I mean, clearly, there's just the attitude, we're not gonna do anything, we're forced to.
No, they, you know, normal people will say they will do what is requested, but they don't always get it done. They may do a partial cleanup or do something to make it look like they're making progress, but they don't complete the whole process.
Would you like the ordinances that we...
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can leave them with her. If I may add, these two homes are just the tip of the iceberg, and some other, uh, buildings in Mount Pleasant that need to say, definitely.
Go next door to me, it's ten times worse than this.
Would you like me to take them on? I, I mean, I thought Mount Pleasant would be pretty.
I was, well, I ended up planting bushes, it was fine, I planted some, so I wouldn't have to see it every day, but, yeah, it's...
It hurts our property values.
And I think part of it is we just don't have the teeth to do things as quickly as we want to.
And that I understand, but you do have ordinances that...
That are addressed.
That are addressed, so I think...
We have, it appears we have the legal means to take care of it.
So trust me, I feel your pain. Yeah, I can give you an address, and it's way worse than this one, and it's next door to me, so...
I'll take favors and pleads for it.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing is, as soon as the ten days are up, that we're going to, and it hasn't been cleaned up, but they haven't, we don't even know whether they have signed for the letters yet, correct?
No, we haven't received a green card.
So we don't know, we don't know if they got...
An operator, the officer should serve one tomorrow first of all, so they try by the post office, try by your staff, they have, and then just go.
That's what I understand, by try by the post office.
Correct.
Certified sheriff.
Yep. Okay, then, then the process starts. Okay, thank you. Any, any further comments?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are we ready to, any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yeah.
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 Okay, looks like we're down to, what, old business? Second reading of a proposed ordinance amending the Tulsa regulations along the highway. Talked about this last time, Jack, we got a lot of new people in the audience today. Want to talk about a little bit?
No problem. This is an ordinance that would allow call signs along highways two eighteen, thirty-four, five passes, and it would allow call signs within one thousand feet of those highways only if they are in a P four or in a minority districts. And we have issued variances to have call signs in these areas that have had any calls with them, so this is an ordinance change that would codify the city practice.
Okay, would you give those students a copy of where that, you know, give them a copy of this after the meeting? Show where that would be. Okay, you give mine, come on. Okay, is there a motion, second reading? Is there a second? Is there any discussion on this one? Roll call.
Yeah.
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 Okay, item B is a second reading of a proposed ordinance amending B one, limited business district sign regulations. Ours seem to be a little bit too restrictive, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a particular minority district that's intended to serve as a buffer or a transition zone between heavy commercial use and residential use, and that's the P one district. And to serve as a transition, only small, low-impact type uses are allowed, like office buildings, medical clinics, that sort of thing. And as another way to limit the impact on, or to limit negative impacts on residential areas, signs are, are limited. And in this case, signs for businesses are really limited. They're allowed, office complexes are allowed thirty square, and for, for an office complex or, or a professional office, like a doctor or a lawyer, something like that. In that same district, schools and churches are allowed, and schools and churches are allowed to have more signage. And the thought is, if schools and churches are allowed to have more signage, what would be the harm of businesses or allowed to have more signage as well? So this ordinance amendment would allow businesses to have the same signage that schools and churches in the same zoning district are allowed to have.
Okay. Hopefully, that's as clear as that to the students.
It's clear to Jack.
Is there a motion for the second reading? Some of, is there a second? Is there any discussion by the council? Roll call.
Yeah.
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 Okay, we're to mail appointments. Due to somebody leaving town, Mr. Hendrickson, we need to replace a job, and one of the library board members actually got a job back full-time with the library, so you can't be an employee and a member of the library board, so I had to look for two names and come up with, uh, Marianne Klein to fill Samantha Davis's spot, and Jerry Naylor to fill John Hendrickson's spot, if, if the council would allow me to appoint those two to the library board, is there a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion of those two names? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We actually had a couple more names, but they both lived in the county, and we already have a county member at the library board, we can have one county member, and since we already have one, everybody else had to live within the city in Mount Pleasant. So I try to obey force's law, which you guys are for me. Okay, next one is Mount Pleasant Utilities Board, please. This is, Randy's interested in this. I propose Dan McKay, continuing, right now, he's the chairman of the utility board. I think he does a great job, and so I'll put his name up for another, I think, six-year term, right, Randy?
Right.
He gets due in October, and they'd like to have him preside at their next meeting. Next one, is there a motion to that effect? Okay, we go ahead. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anybody commenting on that at one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, tell Dan, he's the, I assume, continue to be president. Okay, item D, change order number one on J Street paving project.
It's just to tidy up final quantities based on who it is, and, uh, next step to redo the whole thing, I think, but that is, just even out your quantity.
Okay, and the quantity, uh, change orders cost, what do we have a talk?
Sixteen thirty-one point seventy-eight.
Uh, those of you that haven't proven those, one block, what is it, half a block, or what are those, a block? New sidewalk on the side, nice, really nice addition for the neighbors, that's for sure. Okay, is there a motion to approve the change order?
So...
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, resolution accepting the J Street paving project.
Same thing, it's a complete, uh, this one, our engineer, and the streets can be recommended, whatever the term would be, to accept it.
Okay, so you made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion by the council? Roll call.
Yeah.
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 Okay, item F, this is a change order number two on the waste park, triple plant bars, three replacement projects. Uh, Matt, Brett, you know what?
Well, this is, um, mechanical bars, meaning that we are playing it down, it has a branch utilization base, it has a building that is like a garage over the top. Um, is there any ready to install that? Ceiling is typical drywall, paint foundation. Well, the way we clean, you can imagine the type of chemicals, or acids that comes through that sanitary sewer system when we clean that village. It's easier to take a hose, and so this is a form of metal, polyurethane kind of ceiling that we can easily clean, and it will last longer. We have the same ceiling in our other buildings that we water treat, and so we highly recommend that we add this to that project.
Okay, the cost of adding is just three thousand thirty-seven dollars, correct?
It's a deduct because of all the, but it is a more expensive product, but it will service longer-term maintenance.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that change order?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion or any discussion by the council? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, new business nine A, first reading of a proposed ordinance establishing no parking on portion of the north side of East, like, at the intersection with Harrison. Typo on the here. I was instructed that that was incorrect for the meeting, so I drove by there today, and there were two vehicles parked right where we were talking about, Ron, just like your picture. So is there a motion for the first reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, for those of you that aren't on the street committee, do we have the picture that shows where this is, right?
No.
Okay.
It's basically right behind the police department on the east side of this park. You come to your head south, you stop there, there's two, there's a part between somebody's driveway and the curb, and typically, people park right there, and you're having to get your nose way out into the intersection where you can go through, and it's a safety matter.
And it's a through-street going east and west, so if you go up to the stop sign, they're coming sometimes, you know? Even at this speed limit, that's not very, you don't have much time to react.
The white street drops down, and people, they'll come out and tell it's over.
Yeah, they don't seem to be parked there a lot, so this is a, I think, a very good safety.
Definitely have to put forward a stop.
Okay, you have a motion to approve this? We have a motion and a second, Kenny, but any, any on the council, any other question?
How do you indicate that something, you have signed the agenda, or how do you...
Put a sign that says no parking here, and all this is all...
Oh, so it goes all, you put in that question.
No parking here and corner, and people, the person that lives at the house knows that, and is happy with that. We've talked to that owner. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Yeah.
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 Okay, item B, uh, resolution approving the sixteen seventeen street financial. Brett, you got that figured out?
This is Chloe from me, she gets to put together, as you can see, from this, all the different ways that we spend, revenues, tax funds that we receive, and she has to do this extensive report, gives the help of Rick, and, uh, she's been doing this for four years. Hopefully...
Four?
Four.
And they've accepted every one, correct? Sure. That's good. Is there a motion to approve that? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Yeah.
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 Okay, item C, approval of a retail cigarette permit at two seventeen West Washington Street, that's what?
It's the little building that is on the west side of the Irish Queen.
It's by the...
Gun shop, yeah.
I couldn't read, I couldn't read what it said, who was...
It's cigarettes, papers. Ghost paper.
Okay, I couldn't read, I couldn't read it, so that's why I was there. I saw it this morning and couldn't read who was requesting.
So it's a new, new request?
I knew, I knew this, and that's all, or is there any other similar products or?
Papers.
Papers.
Yeah, show those are. Not conversely, but I know what they are.
So we don't have any reason not to approve it, correct? Yeah. Is there a motion to approve a cigarette permit? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item D, authorizing installation handicap doors in the police department. Let's see, we have a bid, and we need to make our police department handicap accessible. Not much choice here.
Because of my age.
Our police system's getting older, each other's all getting worse, no. Okay, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the council? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, resolution setting a date and a time for receiving bids on the airport foreground, and that would be when, Brett?
October eleventh.
Okay.
At five thirty.
Okay, so we'll be sending information to the news and about what, how many acres and all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution setting the date?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Go call.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, item F, resolution authorizing payment of bills during city council recess. That's meaning, you know, there are times when bills come to the city that need to be paid within a ten day period, or we receive a late charge, and because council only needs every two weeks, it creates problems sometimes, and the auditor said, this is a way that you technically can get around that restriction of that. So you're basically approving bills that, yeah, go ahead and read the list.
Yeah, it's just, it's just given, you know, we get discounts and payrolls sometimes, and it's pretty routine stuff that, that we have to do.
It's not stuff that's unlegible?
Yeah, it's not buying shelves and stuff like that, it's, it's your stuff to run the city, taxes, payroll.
And you will see those bills on your bill of the list, anyway.
But this is agreed by our auditor, and you should have that flexibility, able to maybe save some money.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution, approve the resolution forward? Someone, is there a second?
Second.
I read this, I figured it was the auditors who were asking this. Is there any discussion by council? Go call.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, uh, public forum, anybody from the public wish to address the council? Mr. Croft, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Don't be too long.
No, don't be too long, yeah. I just wanted to compliment you on my last Tuesday night, and last Friday, and we had a wonderful one. Kind of thanked the council for letting us do that, and then the person who keeps the council here in the record center, thank you there. Public register, head of the emergency chair. Police department, who is former chief.
Bush's exit.
Perfectly, thank you. Now this year, we have to practice side, and on the other side, and actually, the other, we had, well, the wide sidewalks, the perimeter sidewalks, really worked with us, and people tend to, going to share with my colleagues right now, they would be on the, the walk by, and then even if they closed, it's kind of a lot to the better of the citizens, so, it's really, really nice. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing those comments to us, we like to hear some good news down there.
I mean, some amazing cars, but they're not there that long.
Steve breaks his own one's law, doesn't he?
Yeah, I'm talking about disreputable cars. I'm talking about, they do.
I don't know, who are you talking about? Okay, anybody else from public wish to speak today? Do you have anything to tell us? We know we got the private tax going on in Washington Street and courtroom.
And might say, most of the concrete's down on Winfield, so we're not too long from opening that one back up.
Yeah, another week or two, like Steve's gonna like that road when he's over there.
Yeah, I do get to test it. Yeah. Well, we could ask them to let you test it, but we take the barricades off, I guess. Okay, no barricades, that's better. Uh, but they're doing concrete patching on West Washington, they have the asphalt off of Courtland, this, this week yet, and so, and hopefully, we might see some asphalt down, uh, West Washington in the next week, quite a little bit of patching to do, there's pieces of curb that are broken, that kind of thing, and the intake boxes were all.
The weather couldn't be any better, could it?
The roads were broken, so. What's that?
Weather couldn't be much better than that.
Could be better right now.
It's outstanding. Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Ron? Brett?
Just, you have, trying to revise personal handbook that hire Dallas North Law Review, give their recommendations, so browse through it, and then we will have action from the council at the next meeting. Is that the same thing?
Okay, Lawrence?
Yeah? Very pleased to have the opportunities from Main Street Committee to actually talk about their dissatisfaction with that process, and hopefully this will be a way to move forward on all these properties. Steve?
Uh, just a personal note, as of yesterday, I am a grandfather.
Didn't look like you were that old.
I didn't either. I do.
Border girl in danger.
Little girl named Mila Fay.
Okay.
What's the second name?
Fay, F-A-Y-E. That's my mother's middle name, so.
I have a granddaughter that's two months older, named Mila May. Because both the grandmothers middle names is May.
Okay.
And so, yeah. How do they spell Mila?
L-I-L-A.
That means, that means love and her.
Okay.
Something like that. I was told that's what it's, works for me.
Matt, hey, now, Terry, you don't want to tell us anything about old treasures?
Thank you.
Next year? Yeah. Rick?
No.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jack? And Pat? Okay, nothing for me, basically, I think we're getting projects kind of hopefully wrapped up here in the next thirty days or so, and we'll be ready to start with lots of stuff next year, and next year's really gonna be wild, so. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Order adjourned.